The Board of Selecting the Meeting for Tuesday, July 2nd, 2024. At 7:01 PM, it's in person and virtual at the Town Hall. So I think all this meeting to order, but first we're going to pledge allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I haven't said that in years. Oh, well, thank you. So first off, there's going to be public comment, but I would like to keep your comments to less than three minutes, if you would, be so kind. And you can only comment on items that are not on the agenda. That's a standard practice. So is there anybody who would like to comment on anything? Yes, state your name. Yep.
I'm Lauren Lamset, live at One Lakeside Circle. And here, because I'm probably tilting at windmills, because I understand that other people have asked you before and you've said no. But I feel like government of the people, by the people and for the people, and I want to state my concern. So I am selling my house and I am required on August 1st to pay taxes for the full year. So I'm moving September 10th. And my realtor, my financial planner, no one else has ever heard of a town that makes people pay their taxes for the full year. Everybody else does six months. So I am curious, why does Bolton make people pay their taxes for the full year when it's extremely weird? And when people have repeatedly asked to let people pay for half year? Particularly senior citizens. It is a big knock. It would be a lot easier for seniors. I think it would be politically smart of you to do something for seniors. I just read in AARP that a lot of people inherit their parents' houses. And then there's big tax bill because the parents are like, you can't do this. So I'd like to ask, if I please, I paid my tax bill in full for 14 years. If I could please this year, when I come in on August 1st, pay for through till December. I'm already going to be gone in September 10th. And then the buyer pays for the rest of the year. And I would like to know, why do you guys feel like it's fair to ask people to pay for the full year when it's so weird and it's so much money?
We're not, we don't, we don't comment on the public comment.
All right.
I will take it up at our next meeting. Absolutely. I would recommend that you talk to the tax collector.
I have.
About it, and it's our practice.
The tax collector said, well, you could talk to the first, to the select and at board meeting. So here I am, tilting at windmills.
Yep.
Then I think you should do something about it, especially if other people have come before you. I'm not the only one who should be responsive to your citizens, particularly your senior.
Mr. Chairman, I may, yeah. We can't act on anything that's not posted on the agenda. We'll add and discuss, but the unfortunate thing is, which being asked, gets into all kinds of details and in items that unless the board is prepared to, to explain what those details to you, I don't think would be. If anything that we could say tonight that would satisfy your question or could answer it in a way that, that I think would be appropriate. So.
So what did you just say?
I just said that we can't answer that tonight.
So are you going to give me any possibility that on August 1st I can pay half a year?
If, 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 no, there's no way that this could be changed this year. If that were to change, it would have to be the next fiscal year before it could go into effect.
Okay, could you do that? Just tell me how many other people have asked this? How many other towns pay, ask for a full year of taxes?
I don't know. There are very few.
Since I joined the board, I believe I've heard three other people come to a Board of Selecting meeting and ask about it.
And how many towns do this? A year?
I, that's not an issue that I, I spend my look at. I don't.
Would you like to do something that's kind of step of other towns that's responsive to your citizens?
We can bring it up at, at another meeting.
Pardon me?
We can bring it up at, at another meeting. We'll put it on the agenda and bring it up, but we can't do anything with it right now.
So the next meeting would be the beginning of.
I don't know if it'll be the next meeting. Right.
Well, I'm leaving in September, so it doesn't affect my taxes. So it's tilting at windmills, but it leaves me with a very sour taste for a town that I graduated to high school, 1975. I've been there a long time. I know my father, when he and Al Hearn started the Common Sense Coalition, taxes was a big deal. You gotta be responsive to your people.
Like, this is only a third time it's been brought up. We can put it on another agenda and move it forward.
Okay.
We apologize. There's nothing we could do, but could always recommend that you pay half of it and you'll accumulate a percent and a half in interest and let the next buyers pay that for you.
I can do that? I can pay half?
Well, it's not, it's not recommended, but you'll just get charged interest on the other half that's not paid.
You can pay half, but it's not interest free. I mean, if you're going to some, I'm not going to, we can't give you advice on how to do this. But if you're going to be have a closing on your house, I would, I ask your attorney handling, what would be the best way for you to handle this? Because there are different ways of doing it and it's your attorney that should be advising you on that, not us.
Except the town, they should be responsive to the request.
It's the town that's collecting the taxes, but your attorney can advise you on various ways of dealing with this, other than that one payment.
And you do get your taxes back once you have your closing.
I know, but I still have to come up with it. It's a big knock. This year it's 11,000.
We all live here. Yeah, we know.
But you're, I don't know. I'm a senior citizen. I'm retired. It's a big knock. Especially when I'm not even going to be here for three quarters of the time I'm paying.
Okay, but wish I had better answers for you, but like I said, we're not even really supposed to respond to public comment. So. Is there any, or you're good? Yes.
Barbara Modio, Volpe Road, 50 Volpe Road. I'd like to add my, my my voice to hers that I know Vernon in Weatherston, I know for a fact charged twice a year. So I think twice a year would be something that the town would look into. And senior citizens, as I am also. But I think for another reason also, I'm here as part of Bike Block Bolton and I, I wanted to tell you that it's been more than 50 years through no fault of the town of Bolton, since the people of Bolton have been able to travel safely from one side of town to the other, except by car. And this has meant that children could not walk or ride a bike to school. They could not walk or ride a bike to a friend's house on the other side of the divide. Adults could not get to the municipal offices, restaurants, parks, schools, any place that was on the other side of the divide unless they had a car. That's 50 years and that's a long time. So we asked that the town of Bolton insists that Connecticut DOT corrects this problem area that was created by their own design over 50 years ago, before a pedestrian or cyclist is killed or injured. We know that people pass through that area every day at their own peril. We also know that as drivers are more distracted and speeds are faster, pedestrian and cyclist injuries and deaths are on the rise. A feasibility study and a plan for a safe path for pedestrians and cyclists cyclists has already been submitted in 2017. It can be constructed, I would think, in such a way that it could fit into the design of the complete reconstruction of the corridor, which is also so badly needed. We know that. We don't dispute it. But because of the size and the cost of the project, that could take many, many years to come to fruition. And it seems to be in a stalled mode right now. The pedestrian bike lane needs to be constructed now. And we asked that the town of Bolton move forward with a separated lane for the safety of people who traveled that dangerous section by foot or by bike every day at their own peril.
Thank you very much, Barbara. Is there anybody else who would like to speak? Yes.
We would like to speak about the right of way, and I just can't understand why my husband can't speak. He did not speak at the other hearing, when you allowed people to speak about the people road issue, which was ongoing business on the May 7th. There were four people that spoke at that meeting about the People's Road Act, which is ongoing business on that agenda and a public forum comment.
Three minutes? Go ahead.
Thank you. I appreciate it.
I just wanted to comment on a couple of things that were brought up in the last meeting. This picture.
Name and address, please.
My name is Craig Moore, 45 in Rico in Bolton. This picture pretty much sums it up. This is why we got involved. Now, in the last meeting, there were multiple right of ways which were brought up and said, listen, if we, if we vote on this, it's going to set a precedent. This is the one that Mr. Cooper Teller brought up on Elizabeth. If I back up as far as I can, I can't get another house in this picture. This is the one that he brought up. I don't even think he lives anywhere near it, and it certainly doesn't cross his driveway. This is the one that Mr. Anderson brought up. It's also on Enrico. Again, if I back up to the back of the street, I can't get another street. I can't get another house or driveway in this picture. This is the one that Dory brought up on Luxway. Immediately, nobody brought pictures. Same thing. If I back up as far as I can in that circle, I can't get another house or driveway in that picture. So what we are asking is this not be treated in the same way, shape or form. It's not setting a precedent on all the other right of ways in town. This is different. Somehow, somewhere, somebody made a mistake and allowed the driveways to be put there. That wasn't our fault. We just bought a house. Of course, our lines, our title is going to show that the right of way extends all the way there because the intention of the right of way is when the street continues, that is my land that goes all the way there. So I, I just, I fail to understand how all of this is being used against us. These are, I challenge anybody in this room, find me a right of way in this town that looks like this. Anybody? Does anybody have it? Anyone in this room, you have a right of way in town that looks like this. What we're asking is that somewhere, somehow, somebody made a mistake. Own the mistake and learn from it. Driveways don't belong in right of ways. I get it, but we didn't put it there. Right of ways are meant for the extensions of the streets. All we're asking is that somebody from the town own up to the mistake and not continue to do it 30 years later. I don't know. You teach your kids, but I teach my kids, you make a mistake, own it, learn from it and move on. Don't make the same mistake again. That's all we're asking.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Is there any other public comment? Okay, and we're moving on to. I'm sorry. Yes. No, is it gentleman?
My name is Alan Vickon from the Conservation Commission. And I was asked to make a statement in support of the Bolton Bike Block movement. And and this is the statement, the Bolton Conservation Commission supports the safe remedy for the residents in the Boltonites area to access the Hop River Trail and the East Coast Greenway. We feel that an open connection will help restore free movement for pedestrian and bicycle traffic between the various parts of town. We further encourage a professional study by qualified persons to determine and resolve satisfactory access and safety concerns for the residents of Bolton and the towns to the east. Respectfully, the Bolton Conservation Commission.
Thank you. Yes.
My name's Kim Welch. I live at 51 Vernon Road in Bolton. I'm here to support Barbara's request for Bike Block Bolton's missing link to be addressed by the board. I'd like to also suggest that the board separate this project as an individual project rather than trying to tie it with the realignment of the entire intersection there at Route 6, 44 and the end of 384, so that pedestrians and cyclists, multimodal can get through that intersection safely. I'm a cyclist. I've commuted to Hartford on bicycle through that intersection for years and it's not safe. You cannot get eastbound through that intersection without getting on the highway, dangerous part of the highway. You can get the westbound side on the shoulder of 384. It's just not safe. It needs to be addressed, and I think it's the town's responsibility to address it at this point by separating those two projects that have been historically tied together. Secondly, I'll support Lauren's request to have the town revisit why we can't pay our taxes in two pieces. From his, from other meetings that I've attended over the years, I'm a 32-year resident of Bolton. I have heard this conversation several times. And it's time for Bolton to catch up with the times and let the folks do what everybody else in the state is doing, which is paying their taxes. If not two, sometimes four times a year. So it's time for us to catch up with the other folks in the state and make that a possibility for us here in town.
Okay.
Thanks, Cam.
Yes, is this Linda?
This is Linda. Hi. The first person who spoke, can she re-identify herself? And the person who spoke for the Conservation Commission as well. And if anybody has anything that they read from a written statement, if they could submit it into the record, that would be very helpful.
So what was your name again?
My name is Lauren Low Lamset. I own One Lakeside Circle in Bolton.
Okay, and I believe it was Alan Vickman?
Vickel, V I C K E L L.
Okay, is that the two you wanted?
Yes.
Okay.
Thank you.
All right, then we're, I don't believe we have any correspondence. I didn't see any. So we move on to the approval of minutes.
Mr. Chairman, I move the approval in minutes of the June 4th regular meeting.
A second. Is there any discussion on these? On June 4th? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All right, it's four yes, three absent. And then there's the June 18th minutes?
Yeah, and I'll, I'll move the motion to the adoption of the June 18th special meeting.
Is there a second?
Second.
Is there any, Amanda, is there any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All abstained.
So that's three, yes, one abstained, and three absent. So next is appointments and reappointments and resignations. First, we have Sean Bailey, who is resigning his position as the Highway Superintendent. Ernie Richardson from the Veterans Commission, resigning his position.
Mr. Chairman, if I may, yeah, please act, we act, we act on these one at a time.
Oh, yeah.
If I may.
Yeah.
Yeah. Well, um.
Sean.
Yeah, I'd like to accept the resignation of Sean Bailey and thank him for his, for his service to our community.
So I have a second to that. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
And also for Ernest Richardson, who served on the Veterans Commission. And he, and Barney the Initiator served on that, can no longer serve. And I'd like to accept his recognition. We thank for his service as well.
A second? I'll second that. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Can I ask a question related to the first one?
Yes.
So Sean Bailey's resignation, who takes over his role in his absence? Is that now?
Well, yeah, John.
John?
John. Well, John.
It, it would, it would be the, the town administrator who can authorize. Person being authorized right now to do it is our building's underground supervisor.
Yeah. It's gonna be a lot of work. Hopefully we can find somebody.
Well, it's already been.
Posted.
The goal, the goal is to have someone in place by the end of the month.
Oh.
5C Gregory Karini.
Do you want to do these together?
These we can do.
I'll make a motion that we accept the following appointments or reappointments. Gregory Karini to the Veterans Commission as an alternate. Rod Parley to the Conservation Commission for reappointment. Brenda Cultato to the Conservation Commission, Commission as a new appointment as a full-time member. Cara Raitt to the Heritage Farm Commission as a reappointment. Leslie Shea as a Heritage Farm Commission, new appointment full, wow, do we have?
New point, full members.
Another full member slot? We'll say as a full member right now. And then Helen Winkler to the Senior Citizen Commission for reappointment.
I'll second your motion.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Let's, oh, yes.
And just, we need to double check and make sure that there's a.
A full member.
For the record, that there's a full number spot for Leslie.
Okay. So number six, ongoing business deliberations regarding Pejoli driveway application. So we heard the attorneys speaking last week and we just heard one other speaker hold on. Is there, is there any other concerns that we'd like to bring up here?
Well, Mr. Chairman.
And just so we know.
Would we have a council here?
Council with us?
I would have liked to make a rendering tonight. With, with four, seven members here, I don't think it's fair to either party. This, this board is, is, is a decision that quite frankly, it's it's significant to both parties, one way or the other. I don't care which side you're on. And I think it's inappropriate to to do it with all the full membership here. I, I'd like to postpone it, even if we have to have a special meeting just for this item. And I, I would have no, no problem with that. And it might be easier for both parties if we did that, instead of having them come here and sit for a regular meeting and go through this whole process.
Could we add it to our next AP meeting?
Say again?
Can we add it to our AP meeting or next?
That's the 19th.
We added something to that.
Already?
Yes. Yes, we did.
We've already got two more meetings this month.
All right, we can. We'd have to look at a calendar date to do it, but I just, I don't know if the rest of the board is.
Do we need to pick a date tonight?
Consistent.
I can go get the calendar.
Let's take a look at it. We'll do a tentative date.
We also have Mr. Barker here tonight.
Before we do that.
I can leave.
Well, no, I just mean you know, being cognizant of your availability and.
Right, and make sure you're be available and we're trying to not make it appear if anybody going away the month of September, of July, or in the period of time, so we can work around that. No, I'm sorry.
I'm meeting July 15th on weekends.
Okay, so that week, we, we can try and work around that week. Well, I think we should try and make this focus so.
Well, we don't know when.
No.
Tim.
Right, so I don't think we can pick a date tonight, Mr. Chairman, if, if, but if in the month of July, you're all here, right? And you, and you're, you're, you're going that the week. Well, so if we consider that week, that is not an issue. I want to make sure you, personally, that someone has representation here.
I think you're just going to make a decision.
That's our goal, to make a decision.
It's not like we're going to be back and forth. You're just going to make a decision. So I can listen to the decision on it.
Okay. Neither the way, and that's all, but, but I don't need it. I, it's one way or the other, it's got to be done, but and we.
I think we're going to have to pick one later, right?
Yeah, let's, let's, yeah, I want to confer with the rest of, so all the board members can be there. And we'll make sure that the office notifies the parties, so you all know. So I'll make a motion, Mr. Chairman, that we postpone action on item eight, a CA rather.
Six, six A.
Six A. Sorry, glasses back on. Six A. To a meeting to be, to be announced. But.
Yes.
And does it have to say, because this just says deliberations. It doesn't say deliberations and act on?
Right.
Does it need?
I would, I would put deliberation and act on, yes.
Um, is there any other discussion on this? So all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, four, four yes. Mr. Barker, thank you for attending.
Yeah, I can leave.
Yes, you're dismissed.
This is the board specifically made it so that action will be held that night, but that's the bit, that's the main item of the meeting.
I can leave it. Yeah, unless you want it. It's a lot of fun stuff.
I see that.
Thank you for coming.
Okay.
Hey.
You'll take care of your sparrows if you want.
Yeah, if you want me to know, you know, you're going to send some dates around or?
Yeah, and you're going to be gone next week, is it?
A week after. I'll be gone Thursday through Friday. We'll have the 18th, I'll be gone for a couple of days.
Okay. And we'll, we'll make sure.
Thank you very much.
Me neither.
You as well. Thanks.
I work all damn summer. I'm here. These guys are working all summer.
Okay, number seven. So you're welcome to, the rest is kind of fun stuff. Number seven, A, consider and act on non-union pay raises.
We don't have Jim to answer any of our questions.
Right, no.
So do we push this through? Because of course I have questions. You know?
No.
The answer to my question.
I do that. They kind of are driven based on the supervisor's union contract that was just negotiated. But I don't see really.
Yeah, I mean, I guess I just wasn't clear in the column all the way to the right where it says contract followed slash suggested increase. If it says supervisor's contract, does that mean they are on the supervisor's contract or they're suggesting we do the same thing? As the supervisor's contract.
As far as I know, that's the same thing as.
It is the same. They're, they're, they're not a part of that contract, but
They want us to.
In past, they're, they're, it is based on the same structure as the supervisor's contracts.
I mean, the only major concern I had is how much we're paying our deputy registrars compared to our normal registrars, compared to our other staff. The fact that we're paying a driver more than our deputy registrar. I'm sorry, that sounds really petty, but the deputy registrar job has become incredibly demanding, incredibly detail oriented. I will speak on behalf of the Democrats and say that we are struggling mightily to find anybody to be a registrar or voter or deputy registrar because of the demanding time and detail orientedness and ability to use computers. And I think our town needs to consider doing something to make it more appealing to folks, because that's a very important role that we have in town to make sure that our elections are free and fair. And I think we should reward it as such.
That, that issue is, is consistent to both parties. I mean, having that problem. That, that issue is, is consistent to both parties. I mean, having that problem, it's not, it's not a one-party issue.
It's too bad we can't have a non-party person.
Right. So this take.
If I may comment on that?
Go ahead.
I mean, we have, the boards in the past have adjusted those. Further on beyond this, because of additional workload and the way this legislature keeps moving. The, the ball as far as what they have to do, um. The, the workload is, is just, I think it's going further and further and more than likely, we're gonna have to look at this. Going forward, yeah, I mean, right now, um I would recommend we, we accept the uh.
As presented.
Proposals as presented. And also, uh, I don't know if we can make it, but I'll let's do that, but I think. Afterwards, I, I can just make the comment that we, we should revisit a couple of those. Item, particularly the registrar voters in lieu of what legislature, what the legislature is doing. As far as the workload that being put on those people.
And go ahead.
There's another question, I guess, so.
Where are you?
Now, the whole thing. I'm just generally trying to understand the chart where it says suggested increase or contract followed. Is that showing us the increase from current to twenty-four, twenty-five, or an increase on top of what is written? Okay, so then I just don't know why they didn't put a percentage next to everybody. You know, like.
Cause not all of them change every year.
Well, they are, but they didn't fill in the percentage.
We have to figure out the percentage.
Yeah, no.
Ourselves.
I just don't know what, what it was based.
No, they just, they, they just put the uh freight fee down.
So, uh if I could make a comment, the van drivers are twelve months a year. Five days a week job and they're, they're, uh, they're not easy to come by either.
No, I know.
And they're, they're, I think, they have some benefits attached to them as well, where the registrar brokers, I, I agree, they really get beat up nowadays. Um and I think that should be looked at. Yeah, go ahead.
The other thing I thought was a little bit concerning is the. How, how little we pay our camp directors, seventeen fifty an hour to be responsible for our children. You know, that's barely over, I, I know it's hard to fund our budget, right?
Your page two.
Yeah, page two, camp director. I mean, if, if we're not struggling to find qualified people to do these roles. Then, I mean.
Yeah, that, and that's a part-time.
Right, which is often harder to recruit.
Oh, I know that.
Right, you know, usually your part-time, non-benefited positions are a little higher to. Try and recruit somebody because it's hard to get someone who's available, but if we're getting qualified candidates, I, I mean, I would just wanna hear from Stephanie or Jim or, you know.
I think she tries to stay within her budget, which is usually driven by what she charges.
Yeah.
What's charged, so, I mean.
Great, she does try to.
And we can't charge more a lot because other towns are competing. Um but it, it does seem to be very little money. But their kids. High school.
I mean, I was a camp counselor, so. The director was usually in her twenties, but.
Uh, any other comments? Uh, so we have a motion to move this forward or? Second? I'll second it and all in favor? Aye, three, four, bring it up like that. Let's, uh, forty, yes. Keep putting my little hand on the board clerk, so it's like she's getting rid of, sorry.
The color's different.
Yeah. So now we go to seven. B, consider an act on budget reductions.
The emails from Kathy.
I don't know, my.
So this is a result of the cuts that we on the Board of Finance made. Which was twenty-five thousand dollars to.
Okay.
And so Jill's suggestion, for Jim.
You want picture of her time?
Is here. Oh, it's, it's, uh, her suggestion is to cut fifteen thousand from workman's comp and ten thousand from liability insurance. Recommended based on the result of actual costs coming in lower than projected cost and historic workers' complaints that have been resolved.
Makes all the sense in the world. I'll still move.
I will second.
All in favor? Aye, that's four, yes, um, consider an act on budget production. Uh, seven, C, consider an act on delegation of authority to approve driveway permits with our highway. Superintendent gone, we have to transfer the duty to someone else and.
Well, the duty was never delegated.
Delegated and our attorney has prepared a motion.
I'll make a motion that the Board of Selectmen delegate the review and approval of driveway permits for the highway foreman. The highway foreman shall seek advice from the local traffic authority or town engineer as necessary. In the absence of the highway foreman, such authority will be given to the town administrator, who is also the local traffic authority.
No, I'll second that. Um, any discussion? All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Aye, that's four, zero, motion passes. Uh, seven, D. Can you leave us? Thank you. Have a good evening, thank you. Seven, D, consider an act on authorization to submit homeland security, cybersecurity grant.
So I'll see it.
So I didn't see that in the paper either, when I was looking.
Okay, I'm your nice, I didn't see it.
No, that's part of the.
No, I, I didn't.
Do we need to know the amount or can we just authorize? The application.
Can I, I can. I can uh call Kathy and find out. That's acceptable behavior.
I'll see a copy. Well, it's an annual grant.
Oh, is it?
Yeah, it is, yeah. We do it every year.
I'll make a motion that we authorize. The town administrator to submit the Homeland Security Grant on behalf of the town of Bolin.
Second.
Any other discussion? All in favor? Aye, 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 for, yes. Uh, reports and update.
Rolling around.
On the end, it, it, this is the level as far as the floor, it doesn't roll, everywhere else it'll roll.
And also. The budget report. Pretty much stays the same. And this is through June twenty-seventh, twenty-twenty-four. Everything pretty much looks in line except the obvious.
I did find the thing from Jill, was buried behind everything else.
Oh, did you?
Oh, okay.
He was behind.
So is there any questions on the uh, on the budget report?
I'll move as.
There's nothing. The budget of what? I just wanted to know. Calculate the percentage that's unexpended at this point. I know we haven't done all of. Cause this AP isn't included on the same, and this AP, is this AP gonna be?
Included.
Let me see, I'm particularly looking at the police line item. Which still shows up as unexpended in, all right, yeah, nevermind. All right, I'm gonna turn my head. I'm trying to see how much of what is currently unexpended on the budget is gonna be spent.
Oh.
You know.
You won't know until August sometime, sometimes even further.
Cause the, I know the police is in this AP, and so that's still coming in as unexpended, so our. But it's still gonna be, I think, around four or five hundred, maybe.
Yeah, it's, yeah, it could be.
And we got thirty grand back on the police, I think.
Oh, yeah, there was a big number there, yeah.
But no, like, we came in under.
Right.
Budget by, like, thirty grand, I think.
So Kathy says, I'm not sure to be honest. Uh, if there was a specific number on it yet, just to meet all those qualifications and send in a budget for what we've already paid. And see if we even qualify, so.
But you wanna move the act in the AP report?
Uh, do we need to?
Yeah.
Yeah, okay.
I'll still move.
There's two.
Yes.
The tax collector report.
No, they like, she put two. The first one is three pages long.
Yeah, that's fiscal year twenty-four to twenty-five. And the rest of it is twenty-three to twenty-four.
Oh, right, and it's in here twice.
Yeah, that's, okay.
Yeah, so I think we should do those separately.
Yeah.
So I'll make a motion to approve the. Uh, AP report as presented for the twenty-four, twenty-five fiscal year in the amount of. Fifteen thousand, five hundred, sixteen and fifty-seven cents.
Second.
All in favor?
I had a question.
Oh, go ahead.
Yes, our question.
Uh, well, I, we don't have anybody here, I don't know if people are gonna be able to answer it, but maybe, you know, the crime bond? You know what that is? To cut, to superma, it goes C R M A, it goes to page top of page two. It's a three-year crime. I just didn't know what that.
Property and liability insurance, crime bond.
Oh, maybe it's just property and liability. Maybe that's just what they call it.
It must be a, a.
Cyber insurance or something?
Yeah, but you, there you go, I'm gonna like, it's what it is. Both of them.
All in favor? Aye, aye. Four, yes, and that's for the. That was for the twenty-four, twenty-five.
Twenty-four, twenty-four.
Yeah, I think we have one transfer to act on.
We still have to do. We still have to do the twenty-three, twenty-four.
I'm trying to move it, I'm sorry.
You know, you did it yet?
Yeah, now my brain is.
Oh, the one comment I will make is I'm still looking, I still would like to see the invoices from Novus. For all their special projects that are outside their monthly, just to see what they're doing. Like, we're selling out quite a few dollars to them, and I'd love to know more details of what it's for. Cause there's another four grand going to them. I'll make a motion to approve the twenty-three, twenty-four AP as presented in the amount of. Three hundred and twenty-seven thousand, two hundred and twenty-two and eighty-eight cents.
Is there a second? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, aye. Uh, motion passed, that's for the twenty-three, twenty-four. AP report. So now we're looking for the budget transfers.
It's one. It is, it is a ten thousand dollar transfer that I believe we have to act on.
Yeah.
And that's a, that's a ten thousand dollar from category payroll to category. Technical, technical, the cover class associate would survey for Randy Street drainage.
Uh, do you have a second?
Is that a motion?
That's a motion.
All in favor? Aye, 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 motion passed. He transferred the ten thousand. Port on Nathan Hill, potential parking spots.
Uh, that's when.
So that's when we met the other day and she has a letter she's gonna put out to. Um, all the neighbors. That are on the trail, not just the property, but.
Okay.
All the South Street residents who would be affected by the trail itself, so that nobody's surprised. And she thinks that that can go along very nicely, and she did meet with. Uh, John Butromovic, Butromovich with the town. And he said, it looks doable.
The stony red one?
That's like, yeah.
The, the old house site.
The old high side, yeah, yeah. I mean, it's, one of few spots that's sort of graded enough, but.
It's moving condition for the most.
Yeah, I thought it was.
Yeah, yeah, and so, I mean, you, maybe, I don't even know if they'll have to go for a grant. She said the only problem was to get from there to where the trail is. I think they'd have to do a little bit of road crossing or something, but is it too steep to get up to the trail?
No, from that parking lot, it could just go up to the trail, but then the trail does cross. So there'd be some.
Nothing you could do with that.
Perhaps a crosswalk and some signage and.
Right.
Whatever.
She gave me the impression that it was a little too steep through the woods to get from.
Yeah, I didn't look at that part in particular, but.
Maybe it's the thing where there's two road crossings.
I think, yeah, she might be thinking to then walk out of the parking lot and walk up the edge of the road.
Yeah, that's what I think she had mentioned.
Yeah. Um, maybe you could just cross the street and make a path on the other side. Who knows, but that's.
Either way.
Either way, but at least that's a, that, that's finally a site that has significant possibilities.
Yes. Any other questions? Uh, down to the town administrators' report. I'm gonna make you leave on Jim for tonight. We, he, I participated in emergency statewide drill, which focused on incidents that may occur during voting. Um, I was at that one too, that was. Uh, they, they have a screen and they just come up with scenarios and you have to react to them. It's, uh, it's kinda interesting and it's, and it's a whole format of who are you gonna report to, who's the first person you call, one, you know, who's the second? First you get a phone nine-one, or you get a call that the voter nine-one-one. Uh, and the, did Narcan training for staff, there were sixteen members that. Were trained to use Narcan, which is very good. Fire extinguisher training with the staff, that was at Herod Park, that was on hot dog day, that was a lot of fun. Uh, they had Vernon come with their little setup of fire extinguisher and flames and everything. Oh, that was, that was well attended. And that was the town staff barbecue. Uh, he completed the Criminal Justice Information System audits. I don't know what that compiles out. Completed ordering supplies for SOR opiate brand. So that should be completed. Uh, the union contract negotiations were completed. Uh, posting of interviews for walkthrough, awarding of contract for Nach Road were completed.
Do you have more information on that?
We have a contract from Ty and Fon that we forwarded to. Um, Rich Barker for review, um, soon as he's done with it, that contract. Um, Rich Barker for review, um, soon as he's done with it, that contract will be awarded.
So this is just for the environmental testing?
Just the test, well, it's not just the testing, it's the testing.
And helping us develop an honor.
Uh, that whole thing and monitoring of the abatement and monitoring. Of the air when they.
They have a twenty-four hour dust monitor.
Yes, so so they're.
Do we know what the results of that are yet?
Dollar-wise?
No, the, what they found in there?
No, we gotta get them a contract before we.
Oh, 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 still, okay.
Yeah, but I think.
They haven't done any of it.
That that's almost over with, so they're saying they're gonna go in there and it'll take them, what, two, three days? And then another two weeks to produce the reports and everything. So it's a month away before we can start.
The actual.
Looking for it, well, no, then we gotta find.
We gotta put out a bid for the cleanup.
For the cleanup people.
Yeah, still, but finally getting the thing going.
Right, right, so, well, then we can find out how much it's gonna cost.
Yeah.
So we don't know that yet.
Right.
So hopefully we can get through with the money we have, which we should be able to. Uh. Bid put out for ice cream vendor at Indian Notch, awarded to Ice Cream Sunday. Well, congratulations, I don't know.
Yeah, every year, so.
Do they?
Yeah.
An ice cream truck goes and sits there.
Stays up there, yep, during, during the season.
Do we get a take on that or is it just, no, probably not, okay. Uh, so we posted job openings for the cemetery maintenance groundkeeper. Uh, there was one hired. Says six twenty-four, interesting. Did you know about that, Bob?
Just, I don't know who it was.
Oh, oh, okay, I didn't, I didn't hear that, yeah. Senior van driver still open. Library pages, two were hired in June twenty-sixth of twenty-four. Uh, highway foreman is still open. Uh. We gotta find somebody there soon. Uh, and then we, he worked with the town attorney regarding human resource issue issues. Uh, completed summer help files, background checks and all paperwork. Uh, which I think there's quite a few summer helpers.
That's a lot.
And we know Lori in the tax department has a little helper down there with her, so. Uh, worked with this Yankee Street Fair Church Committee regarding permits and event parking. Uh, which, that turned out to be a cute little event, had fun there. I get to get my picture taken with the little ponies.
They were little pigs, I have, I have videos of the little piglets all the year.
Uh, so that brings us to. Uh, nine, which is the adjournment.
Make a motion to adjourn.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
I'm proud of you, broke your record.
Meeting adjourned.